...the games and strategy all the time, so. I'm kind of famous. I used to be Harvard lawyer on a regular basis in the US. It's strategic.
What's the number I called at?
Um. I'm in bridge, yeah.
Just five nine one?
Yeah. Think it was a thirty-five. Him and his whole family were so darn smart. And dad was a doctor.
Please enter your participant or moderator code followed by the pound key. Please say your name followed by the pound key. You are the first participant in the conference.
Don't know the art of the case. How to function in society.
You ready?
Are you?
I think so.
Okay, so we have a pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all. Make the motion to approve minutes in agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Motion from Stentor and a second from Derby to approve minutes in agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, make the motion to open the public hearing for ordinance is forty and forty-one.
I'll second that motion.
From Stentor and a second from Derby to open the public hearing for ordinance is forty and forty-one. All in favor say aye, or do you want roll call for that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone from the public hearing to?
So, since this is an ordinance, it's, you have to do three readings.
I moved to the end reading.
I don't have it on the agenda to do that. I put it on next week to waive this third reading and to approve it, so. Do you want us to see it?
We can see it before.
Okay.
You want to see it again?
Well.
The one that's.
Want to read it?
Sure.
Okay, ordinance number forty. An ordinance amending the official zoning map, which is part of Winnebago County zoning ordinance for Winnebago County, Iowa, be it ordained by the Board of Supervisors of Winnebago County, Iowa as follows. Section one, the following described real estate is changed from an AG zone district to a C-zone district, or I need to say the agricultural to a commercial.
You just did.
I did now, so. Zone districts, said property is being legally described as tract of land located in the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section thirty-three and township ninety-nine north, range twenty-three west of the fifth PM. Winnebago County, Iowa, described as follows. Commencing at the northeast corner of the northeast quarter of said section thirty-three, thence south six hundred fifty feet, thence west six hundred seventy feet, thence north six hundred fifty feet, thence east six hundred and seventy feet to the place of beginning. Property located at four oh nine nine six two hundred tenth Avenue, Lake Mills, Iowa, parcels in northeast quarter, section thirty-three, township ninety-nine north, range twenty-three west, Winnebago County, Iowa. Section two, servability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be adjusted invalid or unconstitutional, such an injunction shown not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance will, shall become effective after its final passage, approval and publication as provided by law. Passed and adopted and approved by the Board of Supervisors of Winnebago County, Iowa on the nineteenth of May, twenty twenty.
Is that in there?
What's that?
The nineteenth of May, because the law shall be next week.
Oh, it'll be next week, so we want to say the twenty-sixth of May, twenty twenty. Is, do I need to read the part about the ordinance was published?
No, just the, now forty-one.
All right. Ordinance number forty-one, ordinance amending the official zoning map, which is part of Winnebago County zoning ordinance for Winnebago County, Iowa, be it ordained by the Board of Supervisors of Winnebago County, Iowa, as follows. Section one, the following described real estate is changed from AG zone district to a... What is HI zone district?
Industrial.
Oh, okay. Why can't they put an H in?
I don't, you'll have to ask your zoning administrator.
Okay.
Heavy industrial.
Heavy industrial.
Thank you, man.
There you go. Zone district, said property is to be legally described as parcel B located in part of the northwest east quarter of the northwest quarter of section twenty-seven, township ninety-nine north, range twenty-five west of the fifth principal and meridian, Winnebago County, Iowa, as described, commencing at the north quarter, corner of said section twenty-seven. Thence and, and thence on an assumed bearing, north ninety degrees west, six hundred twenty-seven point seven five feet along the north line of the northwest quarter of said section twenty-seven to the point of beginning. Thence south, zero degrees west, four hundred ninety-five feet, thence north ninety degrees two, west, two hundred forty feet, thence north, zero degrees, east, four hundred ninety-five feet to the north line of the northwest quarter of said section twenty-seven, thence north ninety degrees, east, two hundred forty feet along the said north line of the point of beginning. Property located at ten three seventy-nine, four hundred twentieth street, Thompson, Iowa, five zero four seven eight, parcels in the northwest quarter, section twenty-seven, township ninety-nine north, range twenty-five west, Winnebago County, Iowa. Section two, servability clause, if any section provision or part of this ordinance shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional, such an adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section provision or part of, part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section three, when effective, this ordinance will become effective after its final passage, approval and publication as provided by law. Passed, adopted and approved by the Board of Supervisors of Winnebago County, Iowa on the twenty-sixth day of May, twenty twenty. That's it?
So I guess we can ask the product for comment.
Is there any comment on the, on the phone?
I haven't received any in writing or on phone.
Okay. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second the motion.
A motion from Stentor and a second from Derby to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 It'll be on the agenda for.
They'll take care of it next week.
Yep.
All right, discussion.
With the waiving the third hearing.
Discussion on possible action regarding COVID-nineteen policies.
Don't have anything?
I don't know that we need to adjust anything at this point.
No.
I don't think we're confident.
Hi guys, I didn't know if you wanted to know the current situation going on. I'm sure you've all seen it, but um, we've had seven total possible, positive cases. Four have recovered and three are being monitored at home and they have mild symptoms. And right now with our PPP, PPE, we still are requesting from the state stockpile and because our normal channels are taking anywhere from five to six weeks. You guys have any questions?
You're comfortable with our policies staying in place as they are?
Yeah, for the time be, excuse me, for the time being, I am.
So I guess no action.
All right, we'll uh move on to Scott Miners and Gerald to discuss secondary road matters.
Morning.
Morning.
I just said, uh, one thing to note, the guy started with the rock run for the year, so they're working up by rate, doing end-to-end rock road resurfacing. And they'll kind of work west to east across the county and then do the same for gravel, west to east. Um, so we're just getting started sooner than last year, so that's really, uh, good to see. Um, but the roads are in good enough shape to start on that, so. Anything I got?
I have nothing. I uh got one, uh, four hundred and seventieth. I, I don't know if that's on your list of roads to do. It's the first mile from Cassuth to, to Tenth Avenue. And uh and then south from four hundred and seventieth on, what is that, uh, two hundred and fiftieth? Is that what we call it? It'd be Zero Avenue for us in a sense, but uh.
Two fifty, yeah.
Yeah, the mile going south there from four hundred and seventieth, I've uh received uh if you complain, I didn't get out and get a look, look at it myself, uh, but evidently the rock is getting a little thin and they say that it's from uh wind turbine traffic is what the damage is coming from, so, you know, if you could uh get in touch with those people. Uh, you know, see what needs to be done there.
Yeah, well, I can tell you a little on that too. We met last week with the EDF folks and white construction about the closeout process. Um, we haven't done any final inspections yet, so the whole routes, the intersections, all the work they're doing is still, you know, in progress. They have taken quite a few road radiuses out and quite a few driveway radiuses out. Um, there, there's uh some site restoration to do on those and then there's quite a few there still in. I think, Bill, were you talking four seventieth and two fiftieth? I think they just took that one out. I haven't seen it yet, but anyway, they're still working on the roads, so I'll keep, keep an eye on it and I'll look at that one specifically and see if they need to get more material on it. Um, so those, if those uh, um, if people notice things out there, um, they can let us know and we'll make sure it gets cleaned up before white construction and EDF kind of move out.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to make sure you got in contact with them before they were done, so.
Yep.
Hey Scott, I had a question on, from somebody, um, this is how they worded. Are the Grand Canyon sized potholes on the corner a county or state issue? So it must be along Highway sixty-nine by their place.
Yeah, um, it's kind of a, I would say joint responsibility and uh we can take a look at it if you got a occasion.
I believe if, if I'm correct, it's uh, it'd be at the corner of one ninetieth and Highway sixty-nine, uh, just west, just west of the river, west of Lake Mills.
One ninetieth and sixty-nine. Okay, yeah, we can take a look at it.
All right, thanks.
Get her fixed up, yep.
All right, anything else for secondary road matters? Okay, then we'll move on to auditor's office. We'll discuss drainage matters.
Oh, I don't think we have anything today other than getting lots of phone calls on the letters we sent out for the reclassification.
Yeah, so I, I've kept, I've kept those maps in my truck when I'm working because I have to explain them. Well, this is probably going to benefit you because the annexation's up here. Reclassification will make it more fair and.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions about it. Okay, then we'll move on to consider for approval moving June second, twenty twenty board meeting to June first, twenty twenty.
I told Billy yesterday, um, the reason I have this on the agenda is because, um, we have so many absentee ballots this time that we're going to have to start counting earlier. And so in order to move the room, we're gonna, if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to move you to the first.
I'll make a motion to move the June second, two thousand twenty board meeting to June first, two thousand twenty at nine o'clock.
Second, motion Derby and a second from Stentor to move the June second, twenty twenty board meeting to June first, twenty twenty at nine o'clock. All in favor say aye.
I just want to make sure there wasn't anything scheduled for the second.
Uh, let me look.
What's going to the first?
Huh? No, I mean, anything that was like a public hearing or something like that.
Yeah, with a specific date and time. What we could change that?
Internal debt.
Was that a published thing or?
Oh, yes, crap.
So is that something that we could just uh do a conference call for that purpose? And do everything else on Monday? And we're not taking up the room?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
You guys okay with that? Have our meeting on Monday?
I'll take this, I'll take this as your agenda.
That's really the only thing on there that's.
So far.
Yeah.
Well, we won't have to say no, but uh whatever comes in, we can push back a week. Let's just keep the meeting the same and just do a conference call and.
We could, we could do it in my office versus meeting versus in here.
Can we socially distance there?
Whatever you want.
Let's just.
I can call in, so.
Because we're going to start counting at nine.
We'll alleviate one.
Can we just move the meeting till eight instead?
Yeah, but the time on the public hearing is at nine fifteen and that's published already. We'll just.
Let's just call in and have we can alleviate everything.
Just do a call-in meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you going to have the time to facilitate a call-in meeting then?
Well, I'll have, I'll have to make the time. It'll have to work.
If we come in Monday and take care of everything else.
Yeah.
And then just call in for that one thing at nine fifteen. Then I could do that too.
Yeah. So.
Tuesday, and then you'd only have to deal with just that part over long I would take.
And that shouldn't take very long because I haven't had any, I mean, nobody's called about it or anything.
It's probably be like today's public hearing.
So that meeting would just be at nine fifteen?
So you want to amend your motion to?
I'll amend my motion to include the nine fifteen public hearing for the twenty twenty internal tip debt resolution on what the approval of the debt resolution to remain on Tuesday, the second, at nine fifteen as a conference call.
Second. A motion from Derby and a second from Stentor. Motion as stated. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to number eight. Consider for approval twenty-eight E agreement with Northwest Iowa Care Connections.
This is Kelsey. I'm on the phone here. I had a chance to look at that twenty-eight E agreement. Uh, for the most part, it's pretty standard. The only thing that came to my attention and also came to the attention of Cassuth County Attorney when I talked to him is that upon withdrawal, whether it's forced or voluntary, there isn't any sort of like formula for a return of any funds or value for acquired assets. However, it does guarantee service, you know, to our residents through the end of the fiscal year, so I don't know if that's an issue, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, it, it's been discussed at our meetings and, I mean, it's, it's basically you, you we don't, we, we're not going into it with a huge fund balance, so you know, like we did with CSS. It won't get built up. Um, you know, it, well, it possibly some. It all depends on how the level of service we have to provide, but uh.
It's something that could be amended later too.
Yeah.
As you build a fund balance and you have concerns, you could amend it.
You know, they, they vote on it? Would that be a vote?
I would say you have to get the approval, I mean, to get that amendment, obviously, I think it's a two-thirds approval during action if I remember right.
Yeah. Um, but it's for any county that's leaving, so it's, it's an incentive for you either not to leave or not to create trouble, I guess, it's uh.
Yeah, correct. It applies to everybody in the, in the region, so.
Yeah, and as we've found, things happen, so. Yep, you cover our bases. What, Cassuth County approved it anyway, right?
You know, I'm not sure. It sounded like they were going to if they haven't already and I believe.
They approved it last week.
Okay.
Worth, worth approved it uh last week also.
Yeah, that was the only thing that stood out to me and, and frankly, that's just been because of the issues we've had, you know, with the current situation, so.
You know, we still don't want to betray ourselves. You know, by doing that, you, you, how come they're doing that? But uh, you know, we're dealing with a possibility of good money and I don't know. What's your opinion, Kelsey?
Well, it's not really a legal question as far as if you're, it, it just, it's more so if the county's okay with that or not. Obviously, if you agree to this, the, from the legal side, you're not going to have any remedy to, to get that money back. Um, so that's just something to be aware of, but it really comes down to whether you guys are comfortable with that provision or not. I mean, it, it's a legal provision, um, there's nothing wrong with it. Um, like I mentioned, we're not going in with near as much money as, uh, I think we did previously, is my understanding. Um, so that's a consideration, but ultimately, it's whatever you guys are comfortable with. I, I, I would, I'd say it'd be a struggle to get that provision changed in the twenty-eight E agreement, would be my guess.
In the, down the road?
Either way, yeah, either now or down the road.
Yeah.
Um, because have to have that two-thirds.
And who controls, do we control how much our fund is, the business group? And we'll be making our levies. That's, you know. Uh, but can they decide that our fund has to, as a group now, can you consume the whole, more of these, or the rest, northwest? Um, can they decide that our fund needs to be there? Uh, no, okay, no, not that. I mean, we, we've done that now because we've got a higher levy than they, they go over there. But we're coming in, the three counties coming in have much less of a fund balance than they have over there. They have probably two to, I can't remember now, two to three times as much of a fund balance as we're coming in with. Because Cassuth is coming in with very, very little because of uh the, what they have to pay back to CSS with that whole situation, but uh yeah, I, I don't, I don't, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
In the funding portion of the twenty-eight E agreement, it does say the frequency and methodology for determining the amount shall be determined by the governing board and shall be reflected in the fiscal policies.
And that means the whole group, or are we the governing board for our fund?
My reading of that would be the whole group, the governing board for the regions. And I have not been, um, you know, in on most of those meetings, so Bill might have some information about what's been discussed, uh, than I would.
Yeah, it's I can't think of anything that uh you're taxing my memory now.
Probably more for their protection if we're coming in with less money.
We're coming in with less and well, a lot of it, this is, is set up for their, I mean, all the employees are in their counties. I mean, it's, they're, they're saying, I have more concerns with some, some of those things than I do with uh because I, I don't think the fund, once we're in there, we're going to stay where we're at and, and the only one group to change that.
But, but there has to be two-thirds, so it takes more than just the three of them.
Yeah, and we'll be half of the voting, so.
We have better odds on this.
Yeah, yeah, no, we're, we're going to be much, much more able to help control our destiny, which those guys, other than, than not hiring someone we thought they should have. Uh, I've been to their meetings and I've listened to all the decisions they've made and they've never made a decision that I didn't agree with at their meetings as far as their own business over there. Just listening, I hear the situation, hear the decision made and uh, and I, I don't think there's going to be an issue. They're, they're all pretty, pretty straightforward, conservative-minded people, so. And, you know, in their defense, um, maybe somewhat stacking the employee deck on their side of it, uh, they have been many, many of the supervisors from CSS have been in touch with them to be careful about doing this to us. Whether it's warranted or not is another thing, uh, because I think that they ought to be careful. They, they, well, no, that's something, I mean, most of the supervisors are all right, they just don't see what we see.
So you feel it's in our best interest to go ahead and agree to this?
Yeah, you know, we decide to go on our own. Yeah, I don't think anybody wants that headache, so.
And just to clarify, just what, it is a majority of the governing board, not necessarily two-thirds.
But three is not, unless somebody's missing, three is not a majority.
Yeah, no, they're, unfortunately, there could be tie votes. Well, then you've got.
But it takes a majority to change.
Correct, yep.
And I, I don't, I don't think there's, there's going to be any conflicts of interest amongst us all. I mean, I think, I think things, we're all pretty much on the same page, so. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with Northwest Iowa Care Connections.
I'll second it.
A motion from Gentor and a second from Derby to approve the twenty-eight E agreement with Northwest Iowa Care Connections. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Number nine, consider for approval personnel contract for Northwest Iowa Care Connections. Kelsey, did you get a chance to look at that too?
I did. Uh, it looks fine. It's pretty simple. Essentially, uh, the reasons in contract with one of our employees to be the coordinator of disability services and support staff. We would provide, we'd be. We would provide, we'd be responsible for providing office-based equipment, supplies, and telephone for work within the county. Region will reimburse, um, support, or excuse me, reimburse IFRS, social security, Medicare, workers' counterfeit health insurance, and then whatever the terms of their contract would, that would be specifically with the coordinator. We don't have that yet because they haven't been to that contract, of course, so I don't see any issues with it.
Yeah, I didn't see anything either, so. I'll make a motion to approve the personnel contract with Northwest Iowa Care Connections.
Say it.
A motion from General and a second from Stenzrue to approve the personnel contract with Northwest Iowa Care Connections. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Yeah, no, we'll jump to number seven here.
No.
It'll take about 20 minutes, I think, 15. Should we get Julie on the way?
No, she's here for this.
Nope, I'm here.
Oh, you are? Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay. I came to see Elizabeth.
All right, yeah, yeah. We all want to see Elizabeth. Yes, she's the woman of the hour. 9:30, Elizabeth Thayer Gardner-Thompson to discuss exit conference for 2019 audit.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's nice to see you guys. I didn't know if we were going to be able to meet person or not, so.
Yeah.
It's been a whirlwind couple of months. We're kind of reevaluating how we're going to be auditing in the future and, yeah.
Was your son disappointed in this all-on-trap shooting?
Devastated is a better word.
Okay, all right, yeah. Oh, her son and my son are on both, I see her at trap shooting meetings.
Yeah, yeah. He, he went 197 out of 200 at state last year, so he was thinking that he was going to run pretty hard again this year, so he was, but he's only a junior, he's got another year, but it was-
Yeah, well, it too, I guess.
Yeah.
He didn't shoot quite that high.
So it's, it's been, it's been a challenge, so I'm very thankful that he's not a senior and missing out on a lot of that, so.
My daughter is a senior, track is by far her favorite sport. She's a good hurdler and she, she's pretty devastated and then, wait, then there's another girl on the team. She, what does she got, like second last year in state at the discus and she's a senior.
Yeah.
She stood a good chance of getting first this year, because I think the girl that got first last year graduated.
Yeah.
So it's a tough thing.
It's tough, but on the other hand, I'm so thankful for all the time that we've had together as a family too, so.
I've got all my kids in, I want to play 500.
Yep. So it's, you know, there's been good that has come out of it too, so.
That group played last night again.
They're really going to appreciate it, I think, when they get back to school. They're, they're going to be really ready this fall to go back, so. Over the audit report then.
Whoever's stuck the radio on the background, will they mute their phone please?
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll work our way through the audit report. The first stop is on page two with independent auditors' reports. And again, this is the audit report for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2019. The audit is not, the purpose of the audit is not to find fraud. The purpose of an audit is to opine on whether or not the financial statements are fairly presented. We base our opinion on testing samples. We don't look at every single transaction that goes through the county. We go ahead and do a risk assessment and we do our testing and then we base our opinion accordingly. And then this, this letter just kind of goes ahead and outlines that. And for this fiscal year, we have issued an unmodified opinion, which is what you want to hear. That's a clean opinion. We believe that the financial statements are fairly presented. Now, during the course of the audit, we did find a couple material misstatements, but we proposed adjusting journal entries that were made so that all the transactions are properly included in these financial statements. Again, you know, this audit report has three different sets of financial statements. There's the full accrual basis, which is like what you would see in the private sector that includes all your capital assets and your liabilities. There's also the modified accrual that mirrors what Carla has to submit to the Department of Management, known as the GAAP report. And then because the county budget's on the cash basis of accounting, we also have a budget-to-actual comparison included in here. So on page five, it starts management's discussion and analysis, and this just goes ahead and kind of has some comparative financial information, looking at fiscal 18 and fiscal 19. It also talks about the different financial highlights, revenues and expenses, what they did in comparison with the prior year. It also gives us some instructions on how to use this annual report. Again, it talks about how there are three different sets of financials in here and kind of gives some more definitions of the accounting terminology. The actual financial statements then start on page 14. And Exhibit A and Exhibit B, which is on page 16, those are your full accrual financial statements. So your statement of net position, which is Exhibit A on page 14, that's like a balance sheet. And then the statement of activities on page 16, that is like your income statement. And so for this fiscal year, as you can see on page 17, the statement of activity shows a change in net position of about 3.7 million. A lot of that is due to the collection of drainage assessments that have been outstanding. There was over a million dollars worth of drainage assessments that had been collected during that fiscal year. Also, the grants that are received by the county kind of help with that number. On page 18 then, 18 and 19 is Exhibit C. And Exhibit E, which is on, oh, that starts on page 23 and 24, those are your modified accrual financial statements, so they do not include your capital assets or your long-term debt. And again, this mirrors what Carla reports to the Department of Management for the grant report. And then Exhibit D and Exhibit F, they are the exhibits that step you through how you get from the modified accrual to the full accrual financial statements.
Can you go back to Page 18, please? Would you explain the, the net pension liability to us?
The net pension liability is a number provided by the actuary that does the reporting for IFRS. And so the State Auditor's Office works with that actuary and IFRS to determine the proportionate share of each participating entity's piece if something would happen with IFRS. So then they go ahead and they provide that amount for us to go ahead and include in your report.
Now, I, I'm not sure on this, so, but wasn't it only about two or three years ago, it was only 600,000?
Um, I don't know that it was ever that low. It might have been. I would have to look. Well. The first year that we implemented this was fiscal 2015, and at that point in time, the county's proportionate share of the net pension liability was 1.9 million. And that's on page 63. So it has increased a little bit. It actually decreased from last year to this year. Last year, the reported pension liability was 3.5 million and it's gone down about half a million dollars for this reporting period, so. And again, you know, IFRS makes those calculations and the State Auditor's Office audits it and provides it to us then to include.
But it's, it's, it's got a finite date or specified date of when they do this, right?
They do.
According to the stock, according to our funds.
Right.
Or the IFRS funds, I mean.
And it's a year behind, so.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, it is. So when they go ahead-
It's going to look nasty next year then.
It might.
Yeah, good, as I say, this would kind of follow the stock market as opposed, right? Absolutely.
It could, depending on what their investment portfolio looks like. So, so yeah, these numbers, the way that the, it was GASB standard number 68 that was implemented that put all this into effect. And the way the standard reads, they take a measurement date of June 30 of 2018. So that way they have, the actuary has time to prepare the information and they have time to audit it. And those are the numbers that the participating entities use for fiscal 19.
Do you know, is there, is there a percentage of where we will legally have to kick into that economy?
I'm not aware of that.
You're not aware of that?
And, you know, this year, you know, on page 63 again, it shows the IFRS net position as a percentage of the total pension liability. And so that's kind of your funded amount.
Yep.
And that actually had increased from last year to this year too. So last year, it had been 82.21% funded and this year it's up to 83.62.
Wow, that is good.
So IFRS is sitting pretty, pretty solid.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so then Exhibit GH and I are in regards to proprietary fund.
What page are you on?
I'm on page 29, 30, and 31. And those are the financial statements for your health insurance. And I know that there was a big change made during this fiscal year that we're looking at for the health insurance, so, um, that's another kind of volatile area. So it'll be interesting to see, you know, how that pans out. For this fiscal year, there was net income of $78,000, which any net income in the health insurance fund is a positive thing, so. But that again, will be something to watch in the, in the coming years. On page 32 is the state fiduciary assets and liabilities. The county, of course, collects property tax for your schools, your cities, your townships, et cetera, and holds that money and then goes ahead and, and pays it out then in the next month with the apportioning. So this is just a snapshot of what those funds were holding then at June 30. On page 33, we start the notes to the financial statements. And unless there's a specific question on these, I'm just going to go ahead and skip through them. It just, again, goes ahead and talks about your accounting terminology and accounting policies and procedures. There really wasn't any big changes in any of these from last year. Of course, the pension was updated, the pension liability was updated with the, the current actuary information. Again, it goes ahead and gives you your amortization schedules for all of your debt, another closer look at your capital assets. So the only note that I would like to spend a little bit of time on is on page 59, and it's a prospective accounting change. The governmental accounting standards board has issued statement number 84, which will affect fiscal year ended June 30 of 2020, so it'll be something we'll be implementing this next audit, this next audit cycle. And it's looking at the fiduciary activities, so the funds that the county is holding in a fiduciary capacity. And when we come to do the audit, we'll have kind of a flow chart to step through with Carla and Julie to determine that the fiduciary funds that you have are going to remain being reported as fiduciary, or they'll be called custodial funds now. And then we'll also have to add another statement in the front of the book to go ahead and show, you know, now we're showing just the balance sheet. It's going to add a statement of changes to those for the custodial accounts. On page 60, we have our cash basis budgetary comparison schedule. This is just for the governmental funds that are budgetary. So the actual is all of the governmental funds. The column that's entitled "Less Funds Not Required to Be Budgeted," that is your drainage because that is not included on your, your drainage fund, or it's not included on your budget, but it is a governmental fund. And then we also show the original budgeted amounts and then the final amended budgeted amounts then also. And then we show the variances. There is a large variance with the capital projects, but, you know, mother nature kind of has a way of hindering progress on capital projects. So, you know, that's easily explained and, you know, not all the, you know, sometimes projects just don't happen, they don't progress as anticipated. So all the variances there are easily explained. There were no red flags raised with that, so.
I just, this is quite a question, me having been 12 years on board, but in disbursement to public safety and legal services, is that, is that both sheriff and attorney? Okay?
It is. Okay, and then the pages following that, there's just some more required supplementary information and, you know, some more notes explaining why these have to be included. We already kind of touched on page 63 with the IFRS information for the last five years, what those liabilities have looked like. On page 64 is a 10-year schedule of the county's contributions to IFRS for the last 10 years. And then following that is some more actuarial information on how they come up with those amounts. On page 68, we show, we start with the combining balance sheet for the non-major governmental funds. Winnebago County has several smaller special revenue, capital project, and debt service funds. And so Schedule 1 and 2 go ahead and they show the detail for those smaller funds. And then it's aggregated and presented as the non-major column then in the front of the book. So that would be Schedule 1 and 2 for the non-major governmentals. And then Schedule 3 and 4 are the schedules for the fiduciary agency funds. Again, same thing so you can see the detail for those. And then if we skip to page 82, we're on Gardner and Company letterhead. And this is the second auditor's report included in this audit report. And this is the report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance. And, you know, as always, the State Auditor's Office provides us with a code compliance guide so that we can check various code compliance items that happen. Again, it's based on tests and samples, so we don't look at every single transaction that might have had an effect on these comments. And then we go ahead and we get to the findings then after that. And the findings start on page 84. And of course, we have segregation of duties, again, an old friend that we'll always have. Again, we go through if the department has an elected officials and we talk about internal controls and making sure that we're getting the duties segregated as much as possible. You want to keep the custody and the record keeping as far away from each other as you can. But with the small office sizes, there's, you know, it's really hard to segregate them completely. But all the offices do have good internal controls in place and we just encourage you to, to review that every year and make changes as needed. The second finding is in regards to financial reporting. And this year, we had material amounts of accounts receivable on capital asset additions that hadn't been properly recorded or classified. And again, these were found during test work and so proposed adjusting journal entries were made to correct these items so that they were properly included in the financial statements. You know, with the accounts receivable, the Treasury's Office is relying on the departments to let them know if the money received is for a good or service that was provided in June or in the next fiscal year. And so it's really important, especially in July, August, September, for the departments to be communicating with the Treasury's Office to let them know if those revenues are for June or if they're for the current, or the new fiscal year. So, and again, we talked with the departments that had issues with that and hopefully it'll be corrected going forward.
Because we keep sending out notices to everybody at that time too, to please look over their documents because we don't know.
Yep.
And we go by the receipts that we receive in our office.
And some of it, some of them seem to drag out, you know, public health with some of the receipts that they receive, it could be a couple of months down the road. Same with, you know, mental health reimbursements. You know, those are, those can be tricky because sometimes you'll get a receipt in September or October that was for June and it doesn't, you know, by then, everybody's kind of over the whole June-July thing and they don't even think about it and it goes through your office. And I think that's, that's what happened this year with that too. So, and then as far as the, the capital asset additions, you know, just making sure that, you know, those are getting caught and reported also. With the infrastructure, you know, Scott's tracking that through the secondary rules department and he has a report that he can use. The Service Bureau, Engineer Service Bureau has a report for them to use to track that. And he's learning to work with that, so. So hopefully next year, we'll be all straightened out. The third finding we have on page 85 is the preparation of full disclosure financial statements. And because you don't have a CPA on staff that does your full accrual and your modified accrual financial statements, because we assist with that, I'm required to put this finding in there. And again, this finding is in probably 95% of all the audit reports that we issue. It's pretty typical of small-town local governments.
Why don't they just simply change that or am they?
I don't know.
You know, I mean, you're going to find it every year, so.
It is. On page 86, we, we start with the statutory required reporting. And this reflects back on the State Auditor's Office code compliance. And again, you know, it, it changes every year what we're looking at. There's some things that we do look at every year and then we just kind of mix it up a little bit so we're not looking at the same thing every year. This year, we had a finding with the budget. The non-program and the debt service function, the non-program and the debt service functions exceeded the amounts budgeted at the end of the year. And also, we had some of the county departments that were over during the year and those are listed in there. So of course, the recommendation is just, you know, keep an eye on the budget, amend it when required and, you know, adjust appropriations if you need to. This year, we had a questionable expenditure that was found. There was a purchase of a gift card from Bill's Family Food. And the reason that gift card- gift card from Bill's Family Food, and the reason that gift cards can be considered questionable is because the county loses the control of what that gift card is spent on. So, you know, that is something that can be decided with policy, you know, if you decide that that is proper public purpose, you know, you have policy on that. But again, the county loses the control as far as what that gift card is being spent
Who's that?
Sandy Morales did a gift card for one of her people.
Yep, yep. Other findings that we have, on Page 4, we have business transactions, and this goes ahead and discloses the related party transactions for the county during the year. The code identifies $1,500 as a potential, any transaction over $1,500 is a potential conflict of interest. So we have one here that's listed that was under the $1,500, we have one listed here that was over the $1,500. There are a couple loopholes with that, you know, because Mark doesn't participate in the acquisition of the services, you know, that, it's, that's an okay, that's an allowed thing, so this finding just becomes a disclosure for transparency, then there's no finding associated with it.
It won't happen again, right?
Retired, yep, yep. And then on Page 88, we have the last of the statutory findings, and that's in regards to the tax increment financing, you know, that's a complicated thing, and for one of the reports that was required, the county had done a crossover refunding of your, of your TIF debt, and the TIF debt that was reported on your urban renewal report was, or your, your certification did not include that. So we worked with the Department of Management to go ahead and correct that, and it's already corrected, it's already done. When you do those crossover refundings, it's really tricky for the reporting for this, because you have to report both of the debts, and then once the refunding occurs, then you can go ahead and you can take that refunded debt then, you have to decertify it on your TIF certification forms. But again, we worked with the Department of Management, and that's already corrected and taken care of. So that's all I have. Questions or concerns or anything else that I can add there?
Response accepted.
Okay.
Always entertaining to have you enlighten us.
You know, I could talk about this report for days and days.
Yeah, I said, yeah.
I'm a nerd.
Said that last year, too.
I know, I just love that stuff, so, yeah.
My eyes, you glass.
Yeah, so if you guys, I guess, have any questions or concerns during the year, you know, that you can go ahead and reach out at any point, we're happy to help, and.
And we do.
You do, you do, I get lots of phone calls, and that's, that's just fine, that's what we're here for, so. And I guess, you know, going forward, we're going to be looking at what the audit is going to look like and, you know, what helping with the GAAP report's going to look like, and, you know, it might be looking a little different here. We've been working remotely for the last couple of months, and I don't know. My other thing that I wanted to talk to you guys about is Version 10. Do we know when the date is for that yet?
No, I told them that I didn't want anything started until after the general election, so.
Okay, so we've got time for that?
Yeah.
Version 10?
Or Tyler, the software, yep, yep. We've been through a couple conversions and it, it's stressful, so I just want to get you guys off on the right foot, you know, we've learned from things that other counties have done and maybe not done as they should, so I want your conversion to be as easy as possible, so if we can help you avoid some of the pitfalls that other counties have had, we definitely want to do it, because there's a lot that are in a lot of pain in agony after converting, so, especially with the amount of drainage that you have. I just, everything's running smoothly now and balanced and everything, and I just, I want to make sure the conversion is clean and effortless as possible, so we'll talk about that. I guess the next audit, then, probably, so.
Other supervisors send it through that.
It is rough, and that's putting it very nicely.
How far was Tyler? Professionally? All right.
Believe it or not.
Because you're going to need a whole different slate of reports, too, that.
Oh, everything is different.
Yeah, and it's hard to find for you.
We're, we're getting it down, and the problem with Tyler is they're not Iowa-based, they're dealing with a lot of different, you know, locations, states, cities, whatever, so they're not Iowa-focused, and Department of Management in Iowa has their reports set up a certain way with their budgeting, you know, and everything flows, the budget flows to the cash report, which flows to the GAAP report, and it kind of all just works together. Well, you know, not, every, every state is different in how they do that, and so, you know, getting Tyler set up to pull the information the way the Department of Management wants it pulled is challenging, yeah, yeah.
Do you have an idea why, why the state wouldn't provide software that matches their to counties?
I'm all for that.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense.
The problem is, is that counties all have different software, so.
They do.
Yeah, I know, but I mean. I was just going to say, it sounds like something that would be really convenient if it was all.
It would be, it would be, and I know that they have talked about it in the past, but again, counties are so set on what they've used, you know, solutions counties adore solutions, and they don't want to change, and, you know, Tyler counties, they used to like Eden, Version 10, I think most of them would run. And then, you know, we've got a couple entities where they have their own IT department, like Saroporto County, they've written their own software, so, and they use that, and they love that, and I'm a big fan of that, because the IT guy is right there, the programmer, so if I need a report, I go talk to their IT department, and they go, click, 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 here you go, and they can just, you know, pull the reports, and it's, it's very, very convenient. I would think that if they could get all the counties on the same software, that it would be easier for the people at the state when they're pulling the information, and, you know, a tax time when they're helping with taxes and apportioning and TIF, and all the reports would be the same, they could help everybody, everybody, it would be consistent, but that hasn't come about as of yet, so I would be a big fan of that.
Well, from a non-computer guy, that sounds like a no-brainer.
Yeah, too easy.
For us to work with it, it sounds like that's how it should be, too, much easier and less stressful.
And, you know, if you guys aren't converting into, to Version 10 for another year, then that gives us another year to kind of have Tyler develop those reports and get things pulled the way we need them. The concern is the drainage, because that is huge, that's definitely a material thing, and that's not something Tyler's familiar with, because that's kind of an Iowa thing. So we have another county that has drainage with Tyler, and we've struggled, because they, you'll call support, and support doesn't understand what a stamp warrant is, and so you go ahead and explain to them what it is, and they go, oh my goodness, I don't know what you're talking about, let me transfer you to somebody else, and, you know, then you start over trying to explain what a stamp warrant is again, and, you know, I think if they can get a couple people trained for our Iowa special stuff, you know, that would be helpful, too, so again, you know, if you're, a year out, we'll have another year to hopefully get them.
I think that they would have confronted it often enough now that they'd figure out how to resolve that.
I think so. All right, well, thank you for your time this morning, and again, if you need anything, please let me know.
One thing that amazed me about that state trap shoot is how many 200s that were.
Oh, yeah.
200 out of 200 shooting traps.
There was two of them, I think. No, there was only one, and then there was two 199s.
I thought there was, I thought there was more than that. I thought there was three 200s. But I, you, you've got a better memory than I do of that, so.
Yeah, because my son was like, okay, this one graduated, the guy that ran 200 last year graduated, and.
Yeah, so he was looking at, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, I don't know, 197 out of 200 that killed mom's nerves. That, well, you saw the day he ran the 50 that.
Yeah, yeah.
In Austin that day.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's hard for me to watch, it's, because there's nothing you can do, it's not like, you know, baseball or football or basketball where you can yell and, you know, give them encouragement, you just have to sit there and.
Sit there and take it, and she's a bit of a nervous now that he shoots.
I am. He wants it so bad, so, and he's just focused, so.
How many girls are there? There's quite a few.
There's quite a few. This year, I think we are going to have, my daughter was actually going to try it, too, she's a freshman this year, and she's kind of got Andrew's touch, she makes it look easy, but she's this itty-bitty little thing, and, I don't know, I think it would be a challenge for her to shoot 200 times, she can do the 50, but she needs to, to work, but I think we had four or five girls that were going to be out this year.
Can you use any gun you want, shotgun, you know, you can have, I mean, you can use a smaller shotgun that doesn't kick so bad, but you're limiting yourself, because you've got fewer BBs and.
Well, and you can play with the, you know, the ammunition that you use, too, they've got different weights and different speeds and whatever with that, so, yeah, but it's, it's fun, and the colleges have picked it up, and several then have shooting, Andrew's got a couple colleges.
It's really kind of surprising in this PC world that that's taken off.
Oh, I know. But you know, I'm all for it, I think the kids need to understand how to, how to use a gun safely, and they need to respect it, and I think it's great.
The school lets you take one of their vehicles, but you can't have the guns on, so then you have to have another private vehicle or a trailer, and all the guns to the trap meet.
Does a school vehicle hold the trailer?
I don't know, it could be.
We don't, because our coach is not a teacher, our coach is, you know, someone from the community that works with the kids.
Ours, too, which lots of times our, all the guns ended up in the back end of our vehicles.
So, yeah, it was, it was tough this year, Andrew was looking forward to the season, so. I just hope that they can open some up and he can get a little, you know, competitive shooting this summer.
Summertime, that's what I told Woody, I says, you know, maybe we can get into like a, a couple of trap shooting leagues around.
Oh, they've got leagues all over, we, yeah.
I used to shoot a lot of traps.
I wouldn't think it'd be much different than golfing, really, I mean, you could social distance during.
Yeah, no, you're all spaced out when you're shooting.
Well, and you don't touch anything, except your own gun, because even, you know, the mics are, well, in some ranges, you have to call for the target and they'll have to, they have to manually release it, but most of them, it's all voice activated, so we don't. There's no contact.
I can't understand why, it would be a sport that would be conducive to social distancing.
It would be. So hopefully, they will get something figured out, so. All right.
All right, thank you.
You guys take care.
Thank you.
Julie, did you get my message?
Yep. So just let us know when you.
Are you going to be for number 11?
No, that's Carla.
Okay.
We're next week.
Okay.
Okay, number 10, open forum.
That's all I got.
All right, number 11, consider for approval, canceling of old warrants.
I think so.
So do I.
Hey Carla, for Mike?
Yes?
Oh, yes, I didn't know if I would, if I could get through or not, this is Brenda Van Thompson from California.
Hi.
Hi, we've been watching, watching your meeting this morning.
Good.
Good, and we just wanted to, just kind of check in with things to see how, and I want to thank you for the rezoning of our property back there.
Well, it hasn't actually happened yet, we, we got to do some more readings, we'll get that done next week, right, we'll get that done next week, and.
Oh.
Yep, by law, you got to read the, the application three times, so.
Oh, okay, all right. Does that include also the ICE restrictions or any variances that we may need to have?
Well, that would be in it. Do you still on it?
I don't think it does, Mike, because it's just changing the commercial to, or the aguise commercial.
Oh, that's right, yeah, yeah, no, that would be.
You need to talk to Matt Duvey about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, and he said that he was going to talk to the attorney before this meeting and add that to the agenda, so that's all we've had to go on. But we didn't know if that was going to be included in today's, you know, approval, yea or nay, or anything more.
I, I can, I can. I can almost guarantee that that's not going to be a problem. I think maybe we would like to see a little more progress, and probably be more a little concrete in the plans. And I don't know, I'm just talking off the top of my head, because if perchance the project did go through, then we don't want to be sitting with rezoned, you can go, you know, five stories high, and, and so, but I, you know, this goes through, I, I can't see where it wouldn't pass, so.
The reason why we're asking is because our civil engineer is going to be after this, we've gotten the answer, he wants to make sure this, that we're going to approve everything before he goes out there and does his work. That's where we're going to hang up.
Okay, well, here again, I'm just talking off the top of my head, maybe, well, no, that would be in the word.
It would be from Matt Duvey.
You know, but it'd be us, it could, we'd have to prove it, yeah. Yeah, we could probably give the approval of stipulation that kicks in once you've reached a certain, certain threshold in, in your going ahead of the project. I, I'm good luck here again, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, so. I, I, I don't, here again, I, I can't fathom that it wouldn't go through, and, and we can do that, we can find a way of doing that, through stipulations, I would think.
I, I suggest we have Matt on, on our call again next week for this hearing, and he can explain to us the process of that part of it.
No, I understand your position, you know, and that makes sense, so, we'll get it worked out.
Okay, well, appreciate it, guys, for, for the next week, the same time, same channel?
See, yep. Yeah, thank you. Same bad, same bad channel, that one's supposed to be.
Which channel you're on?
He's got my name next to him. Outstanding direct deposit for 2020.
I do not know.
That's interesting.
What's the date on it?
5/1 of 2020.
We don't. We wait...
Where did you get it?
We wait two weeks to cancel our direct deposits, that's what that is.
Oh, all right, all right. So you think all of us should be on it, or maybe we are, I mean, there's a bunch of people.
We don't know at the same time, so if one of them, one of them is, they all are.
Exeter's got one, too. All right, that's, that's just lax.
Mm-hmm. 'Cause if something would be wrong with one of the checks and you've already canceled it, we'd have a, it's, I don't know, it's a mess.
Yeah. The main things are just the first two pages, right?
Right.
All right, well, I'll make a motion to approval, approve, for the approval of canceling of the old warrants.
I'll second it.
Motion from Genzwell and a second from Derby to approve the cancel of the old warrants. All papers say aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the semi-musty county claims.
I'll second it. A motion from Derby and a second from Genzwell to approve the semi, what? Oh, we're still looking at them, and...
Then you wanna talk to Matt about putting that up the agenda for next week, then?
Yep.
We had a conference call with him last week on economic development, and told him that it's a step that he's taking.
Maybe we should have Kelsey available to...
I can see if she was here...
Or make her aware of...
Well, I, she is aware of all of it. She's, I mean, her and Matt have been working on it, and...
Well, I can understand, I can understand their position, but I don't wanna give a variance if the project's gonna be halted and they're not, or they don't go through with it.
Yeah, I...
Man, I don't know what to do.
So for her, it'd be more of a, is there a legal way to do it with a contingency?
Right.
Well, that's the other thing, is I hate to have this sitting as a commercial property if...
It's farmland.
Yeah.
It's a pasture.
Right.
Well, the other thing they were talking about, it came through as the entire acreage is in commercial, and they wanted, like, the house to be the remaining ag residential or whatever. And I said, well, we'll get it this far now, we can apply for that later. It's kind of too far into the process at that time.
Yeah, I think there's a lot yet to be figured out with that. I'll read that.
Yeah, it's a very aggressive project. Kind of like Happy Time camping.
Yep.
It's all these nuts, but it's made it very good, so I hope it goes through.
I heard all their, it was posted that all their non-seasonal sites have been turned into seasonal now. They built them all up, but there is no...
He's talking about putting up some gardens to, to the west, and...
They have no weekend sites anymore.
Where's that?
Happy Time over by the casino. It's a mile north of the highway.
Yep.
Like a hundred and some sites there.
Oh, you, you've done very well, but he's got a lot of best, too, by now, with three just buildings alone.
Well, he was, he was smart in the way he dealt with the DNR. DNR was telling him, you have to spend like a million and a half dollars for a sewer system, and he says, well, can I put a, just put a tank in and haul it to town? I suppose you could, but you'd be going into town all the time with the flow you're gonna have. Sounded like he was only taking one tanker a year into the town. So the flows weren't exactly what the DNR's projecting. And that's one thing I emphasized to them in our conference call last week, was you need to work with the DNR and to determine what you're gonna have to have for a sewer system, water for your sprinklers.
Well, I read...
Question? I just called up for question.
Both. Yeah? You haven't looked at those three? There's only two, two, so...
Looking and signing are two different things.
Okay. Motion to approve some of the county claims. Here it's our best.
Please second it.
You seconded it.
Is that what it was?
Yeah.
We get to start that.
It's on a motion from Derby.
A motion from Derby and a second from Genzwell. All right. Consider for, for some of the county claims, all papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye. You stand adjourned.
Yes.